Welcome to the Clayton County Board of Education. Meeting is June 7, 2021. The time is 6:00 p.m. At this time, I'm going to do the roll call. The callers to order. District 1 Jasmine Bowles.
Present.
District 2 Mark Christmas.
Present.
District 3 Jessie Goree, present. District 4 Victoria Williams. Ms. Williams is present, but she is experiencing a little bit of illness. So she will join us after we come in from executive session. District 5 Dr. Dee Haney.
Present.
District 6 Mary Baker.
Present.
District 7 Sabrina Hill.
Present.
District 8 Dr. Alika Anderson.
Present.
District 9 Benjamin Straker.
Present.
Our superintendent, Dr. Beasley.
Present.
Attorney Clem Doyle.
Present.
Board coordinator, Dr. Shantara Brown Carter.
Present.
Administrative assistant to this board and superintendent, Don Blough.
Present.
Our Clayton County Public School administrative staff is in the audience, communications, and our interpreters. Before we do our pledge of allegiance, I would like for all of us to take a moment, and we want to have a moment of silence in honor of Commissioner Sona Singleton Gregory, who passed on May 27th and was a very valued employee of Clayton County Public Schools as well as the District 1 Commissioner. Let's take a moment of silence in her honor, please. Thank you. At this time, would everyone please stand and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I will read the ethics statement, which reads, "In accordance with board policy BH, it is the duty of every board member to avoid both conflicts of interest and appearances of such conflict. Does any board member have any known conflict of interest or appearance of such conflict with respect to any matter scheduled to come before the board at its meeting or appearing on our proposed agenda? If so, please identify the conflict or appearance of conflict and refrain from participation in the matter involved." At this time, we will have board recognitions. I will turn it over to Mr. Charles White.
Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Beasley, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight, we offer a talented group of students, both present and graduated and adults, for our recognitions. Our first group of recognitions will be virtual. Each has been encouraged to be viewing the live stream of our meeting at this time, and each will be mailed a board certificate of commendation during this week to indicate their recognition at this meeting. So let us begin. Clayton County Public Schools congratulates an accomplished graduate of the Stillwell School of the Arts for his performance at the regional and state levels of the Georgia High School Association State Literary Competition. The literary competition is comprised of events in extemporaneous speaking, essay, oral interpretation, as well as an assortment of musical performances. The GHSA State Literary Competition for the AA classification was held earlier this spring at Georgia Military College. Brendan White earned a state title in the category of dramatic interpretation, repeating a first place in the same category at the regional level. We offer congratulations to Brendan and issue for him the best of luck as he moves forward with his collegiate journey. Congratulations. And now we turn to athletics. We are excited to salute the district students who excelled at the Georgia High School Association Class 5A Track and Field Championships recently held in Carrollton, Georgia. Jonesboro High Schools Yanari Lyons and Queens Adams won individual state championships at that competition. Lyons, competing, Lyons rather, competing as a sophomore, earned her title in the 200-meter dash, clocking a time of 24.07 seconds. She was also state runner-up in the 100 meters at 11.88 seconds. Queens Adams, also competing as a sophomore, became the Class 5A state champion in the high jump. She did so by clearing a height of 5 feet 4 inches. These outstanding performances and those of other members of the Jonesboro team powered the Lady Cardinals to finish tied for fourth with Jackson High School of Atlanta in the statewide team standings. I think we've got a really powerful team at Jonesboro for the coming years. Congratulations to these two outstanding female track athletes. Next, we offer special congratulations as Clayton County Public Schools is proud to announce that Sanaya Fagan, a graduate of Forest Park High School, has earned a spot on the 2021 USA Basketball Women's Under-19 World Cup Team. The selection came following three days of trials in Denver last month. Ms. Fagan, a University of South Carolina signee, is 6 feet 4 inches tall, and she plays the position of center forward rather well. She will report to World Cup Training Camp in mid-July and could participate in the 2021 FIBA Under-19 World Cup Competition to be held in August in Hungary. So we wish her the very best of luck, and we hope to see her on TV competing in those matchups. Our final recognition with regards to virtual recognitions is based on a time-honored Clayton County Public Schools competition. The Hear Our Voices Literary Competition has been a part of Clayton County Public Schools for more than 30 years. The competition, which is open to all students, kindergarten through 12th grade, is designed to foster proficient speakers and writers by recognizing outstanding original student work. It also provides opportunities for students to present their ideas to authentic audiences beyond the classroom setting. This year, students presented work in such categories as speeches, poems, essays, spoken word, and multimedia presentations, using the theme "Be Heard, Raise Your Voice, Be a Jedi," "Justice, Equality, Diversity, and Inclusion." Tonight, we recognize the top-scoring students in this year's competition. They are led by the top-winning submission offered by the Grand Master Jedi himself, Donovan L. Slack Jr., a rising senior at Stillwell School of the Arts. The work, titled "Tomorrow," earned for this Grand Master Jedi a $250 cash gift from the Women of Clayton County as being the top winner. The others joining Donovan as top winners in the competition are Christina Jackson, who, from Munnysmoor High School, is the only graduated student in this group. That means, again, a lot of talent is coming along. We also want to congratulate David Nguyen of Stillwell School of the Arts, Bryce Glass Anderson Elementary, Janaya Alman Lake Ridge Elementary, Ally Tran Morrow Elementary, Ashley Jenkins Marshall Elementary, Janaya Nelson Point South Middle, Crystal Dome Stillwell School of the Arts, Taylor Moore M.D. Roberts School of the Arts, Christopher Taylor Jr. Kemp Elementary, and Sonya Asara Riverdale Elementary. Let us congratulate these outstanding students for their creativity and talent, and let us also congratulate the English Language Arts Department, presently under the leadership of Ms. Ebony Brown and Ms. Alisar Gray, for maintaining and perpetuating more than 30 years of creativity and excellence. Congratulations. Superintendent and members of the board, if they would move out in front of the board table for a presentation and photograph of the folks that we have here in person for recognitions. And you may want to gather over where Ms. Goree is because you want to be out of the line of fire of that projector. So I would ask Yanari Lyons and Queens Adams to please come forward to the stage. Joining them will be Ms. Felicia Brown, the principal of Jonesboro High School. And before y'all leave the stage, we need to do a photograph. Yes, ma'am. Okay, and if the board will stay where they are because we have two more recognitions to take care of this evening. Would Janice McAllister and Mr. Marquis Strickland please come forward? Ms. McAllister is a Title I academic coach at Lee Street Elementary School. With more than 20 years of teaching experience, Ms. McAllister is that special breed of educator who goes above and beyond in reaching out to engage students. Whether dressing as Cat in the Hat or wearing of the green to celebrate St. Patrick's Day, Ms. McAllister is all about supporting academic success for students. It is because of this commitment that Ms. McAllister has been named Georgia State recipient of the 2021 National Education Association Foundation Award for Teaching Excellence. Sorry. The presentation of this award is based on judges' scoring in five specific areas: professional practice, advocacy for the profession, community engagement, attention to equity, and professional development. We say congratulations and wish you the best. Thank you, Ms. McAllister, and thank you, Mr. Strickland. One more. Would Deborah Bunkley and her husband please come to the stage? Deborah Bunkley is the chief collaboration officer-owner of the Network Incorporated, a collaborative think tank and networking resource, and has served as the president of the East Point College Park Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated for the past four years. She was initiated in the chapter in 2007 and has served in various leadership capacities. Ms. Bunkley is well-known for her ability as a fundraiser and led a team that raised over $1.2 million in sponsorship funds. During her tenure as president of this organization, the chapter has partnered with North Clayton Middle School by supporting the school with school supplies, holiday baskets, honor program awards, and in any requested need. The chapter has readily adopted the North Clayton Middle School Drone Pilots Program, awarding $2,000 in supporting funds. Also, under Ms. Bunkley's leadership, the chapter provided over $3,000 in gift cards to the Homeless Education Department and has supported the Nutrition Department of the district. The Clayton County Board of Education is proud to salute Ms. Deborah Bunkley for her dedicated service to Clayton County Public Schools. Thank you. Oh, yes, ma'am. Don't hurt yourself, really. Don't hurt yourself.
Okay. That concludes the board recognitions. And, Mr. Doyle, I'm going to ask at this moment that we actually change the agenda because we have technical difficulties. I'm not sure if we're, if we've ever streamed live.
I got it back up.
Oh, is it back up? Oh, okay. Then we're good then. I wasn't sure. We are going to play the video in memory of our commissioner, Sona Singleton Gregory.
So much we can do. It is just so much we can do to help our children, and we can be so much. We got that opportunity to be that great Clayton. We really do. We just have that opportunity, and I just think we need to work harder, and we can do it.
So thank you, Ms. Gregory, and we want to present this to you.
But just to get in, just to get involved, again, it's about our children, our community. I have always said, I mean, my daughter started in Clayton County Public Schools at East Clayton Elementary as a kindergartner, and I have always said that we got that opportunity to be that great Clayton. We really do. Any school system, no matter where you go, you got to put in your time, again, that time, because, and you just can't go there and expect overnight just things to happen. But just put in your time overnight, and it's going to happen. You know, you're going to be recognized, or there's somebody's going to note you for what you're doing and for what you are, for what that school represents.
Anyone, I'm just going to see if we can just do it by consent. Do we have anyone opposed? Okay, so by consent, we're going to change the agenda. At this time, we need a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel issues.
Madam Chair, I make the motion that we go into executive session to discuss personnel.
Wait a minute. And property.
And property.
Okay, so I have a motion.
Second.
From Dr. Anderson, and seconded by Ms. Bowles, to go into executive session to discuss personnel and property issues. And hopefully, by the time we come back from executive session, we can have our technical difficulties solved. I am sorry for all of those that are looking at us from our YouTube channel. All right, let's go to executive session, you all. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're back from executive session where we discussed personnel and land acquisition. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Beasley for personnel recommendations.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have four recommendations to do. We have four recommendations today. Our first is for the principal of Lovejoy High School. We'd like to recommend Rodney Jordan.
Madam Chair, I'd like to accept the superintendent's recommendation to have Rodney Jordan become principal at Lovejoy High School.
All right, you all, let me make the, ask for the motion first, but I have a motion from Ms. Bowles.
I second.
And so you made the motion. I'll just ask for the motion first, and then we have, Ms. Bowles has made the motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation. Do we have a second?
I second.
We have a second from Ms. Baker. Okay, so let's vote. I can see everybody, so you can raise your hand for the affirmative. Okay, I see everyone's hand except for, I believe, I see eight hands in favor. Put them down. Do I have any opposed? I have one in opposition, Mr. Christmas. Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Dr. Beasley.
Our next recommendation is for the principal of Unidos Dual Language Elementary School. We'd like to recommend Moises Paez.
I need a motion for the principal at Unidos.
I move that we accept the recommendation for the principal at Unidos.
Okay, it's been moved by Ms. Williams. Do I have a second? Our second motion for the superintendent's recommendation. At this time, we will vote. All of those in favor, please raise your hand. I see eight in favor. All opposed, raise your hand. We have one in opposition, Mr. Christmas. All right.
Our next recommendation is for the assistant principal at McGarrett Elementary School. I'd like to recommend Victoria Bedford.
I need a motion for the assistant principal at McGarrett Elementary School.
Madam Chair, I make the motion that we accept the superintendent's recommendation for Victoria Bedford for the AP at McGarrett Elementary School.
Okay, I have a motion by Dr. Anderson. Do I have a second?
Second motion.
By Mr. Straker. Okay, all of those in favor, please show by a raised hand. Is your hand up, Ms. Baker? Okay, yes, I see eight in favor. All opposed, please black signal. One in opposition, that would be Mr. Christmas. Thank you all. The next recommendation, Mr. Beasley.
Our last recommendation is for the assistant principalship at Unidos Dual Language Elementary School. I'd like to recommend LaDon Elliott.
I need a motion for the recommendation at Unidos, the assistant principal.
I make a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent for the assistant principal, LaDon Elliott.
All right, I have a motion from Ms. Hill. Do I have a second?
I second the motion. If Victoria doesn't second the motion, I second the motion.
Which one? Mr. Straker, we'll take your second.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right. At this time, we need to vote. All of those in favor, please raise your hand. All right, I see seven in favor. All opposed. Is your hand up for opposition?
No, it was four.
Oh, four, so eight in favor and one opposed. Thank you, Mr. Christmas. All right, we have, I believe that concludes.
That concludes our recommendations.
Our recommendations from executive session. Okay, so because we had an issue with our technical, we had technical issues, we are going to go back on the agenda. We were still trying to finish up with the board recognition, and we were trying to play the video of our departed commissioner, Sona Singleton Gregory. So we're going to try that, and then we'll go back to public participation after this. Go ahead. Wait a minute, let me mute.
So much we can do. It is just so much we can do to help our children, and we can be so much. We got that opportunity to be that great Clayton. We really do. We just have that opportunity, and I just think we need to work harder, and we can do it.
So thank you, Ms. Gregory, and we want to present this to you.
But just to get in, just to get involved, again, it's about our children, our community. I have always said, I mean, my daughter started in Clayton County Public Schools at East Clayton Elementary as a kindergartner, and I have always said that we got that opportunity to be that great Clayton. We really do. Any school system, no matter where you go, you got to put in your time, again, that time, because, and you just can't go there and expect overnight just things to happen. But just put in your time overnight, and it's going to happen. You know, you're going to be recognized, or there's somebody's going to note you for what you're doing and for what you are, for what that school represents. So much we can do. So much we can do.
Job well done, Commissioner. Job well done. Let's stand up, please, and acknowledge that. Thank you all. At this time, we will have public participation. Due to the COVID situation, we have not been allowing participants to come in person to do public participation. We have given them the opportunity to send in any comments to our website, and then they will be read. Dr. Rump Carter will read the public comment at this time.
Madam Chair, we have one public comment that was received before the deadline, and that public comment is from Terry Bennett, and it reads as follows. Hello and good afternoon. I am a parent of a Jonesboro High School student-athlete who recently graduated. I have been involved and watched my son play baseball for the last four years. Within these four years, I've watched construction on a new building and gymnasium start and be completed. I also realized that there were no upgrades done to the baseball area. In these years, I've watched our children play in surrounding areas and counties with upgraded facilities. I've heard whispers and talk about our field and the condition that it is in, as well as other teams making comments to where they hate to play on our field. As a baseball family, we travel to support all of our children, and we walk onto these other fields in amazement of how good they look. Even though my son has graduated and moved on, I have upcoming nephews that will be attending Jonesboro High School, and I would love for the fields to take better condition as they attend their four years. So my question is, when will we, as a baseball family, have the opportunity to upgrade our field? When can we address this issue sooner than later? Even though my son will not benefit from the upgrades, our upcoming students should have this opportunity. The baseball field is beyond outdated and should be approved for upgrades as soon as possible. Thanks in advance.
Thank you, Dr. Rump Carter. At this time, we will have announcements from Dr. Anderson.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, district administrators, and citizens of Clayton County. Here are the announcements for the month of June. The Month of Summer Solstice is home to Global Day for parents, World Environment Day, and National Children's Day. Beginning on June 1st, Clayton County Public Schools Nutrition Department launched its Summer Meal Service Program. It's summertime. The program will provide meals at 12 elementary school sites located throughout Clayton County. These meals will be available to all children that are 18 years and under or over 18 with a state-defined mental or physical disability. It will run Friday, July 23rd, from 8:00 a.m. until 12:00 p.m. No meals served on Monday, July 5th. For site locations, please check the district's website. The annual leadership retreat will be held on Tuesday, June 8th, using video conferencing technology. The theme for this year's retreat is "Fun in the Sun" and will focus on learning, living, and linking through unprecedented times. The retreat will begin at 8:30 a.m. The June Board Work Session and regular board meeting is scheduled for Monday, June 21st at 6:00 p.m. During that meeting, which will be held at the Performing Arts Center, items will be presented and voted on. The district will be closed in observance of summer break Monday, June 28th through Friday, July 5th. All schools and offices will return to their existing schedules of operation with the opening of the new academic year on Tuesday, July 6th. The district, in conjunction with community partners, will sponsor a back-to-school extravaganza. Move this over. All right, and I'll pull this down. All right, a back-to-school extravaganza on Saturday, July 31st, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon. The extravaganza will be conducted as a drive-by event. More information will be shared on all platforms as final details are completed. Our next board meeting, which is scheduled to be a work session, is set for Monday, July 26th at 6:00 p.m. It is scheduled here at the Performing Arts Center. Madam Chair and community, this concludes tonight's announcements. Thank you.
Dr. Anderson, I want to make one correction on the announcements. We're going to actually have our board meeting as a Zoom meeting.
Okay.
So we won't be live.
Okay.
Ms. Baker says she can't hear me. Can you hear me now, Ms. Baker? Okay, the next board meeting will be a, we will have it through Zoom. It will not be a live meeting.
All right, thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda would be the approval of the minutes. I want everyone to, I don't think, I have not seen that we need any corrections. So we are going to approve the minutes by consent, unless we have any corrections that need to be added. Okay? The next item would be the consent agenda. I am going to take one item out of the consent agenda. That will be the CCPS Local Facility Plan Resolution, and we will vote on that separately. So the consent agenda, we need a motion for the consent agenda, which would be comprised of the financial report, the SPOS revenue report, the purchasing report, the SPOS construction update, and personnel changes report.
So moved, Madam Chair.
All right, I have a motion from Mr. Striker.
Second.
And I second from Ms. Baker. All right, at this time, we will vote on the consent agenda. All of those in favor, please raise your hands. All right, I see eight in favor. Do we have any opposed? One opposed, Mr. Christmas. Okay. Now, we need to go back and vote on the, this is a resolution, the Local Facility Plan Resolution. I need a motion for the Clayton County Public Schools Local Facility Plan Resolution. I'll make the motion. I need a second.
I second it, Madam Chair.
Okay. I think I saw Ms. Baker first, so I'll make the motion, and we have a second. All right, at this time, please, let's vote for the Local Facility Plan Resolution. Please raise your hands. Okay, I see eight in favor. Do I have any in opposition? I have one in opposition, Mr. Christmas. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the adoption of the Fiscal Year '22 Budget. I need a motion for approval of the budget. I'll move that we approve the budget.
I'll second the motion, Madam Chair.
It's been moved and seconded by Dr. Anderson. At this time, we'll vote for the adoption of the Fiscal '22 Budget. Please raise your hand if you're in support. I see seven in favor. Any opposed? I see two in opposition. You see the two that Ms. Bowles and Mr. Christmas are in opposition. Okay. All right. According to our agenda, that concludes the agenda for this evening. Thank you all. We are now in adjournment. Thank you all so much. We're adjourned.